We're recording now.
Oh, that's some.
Live to L O C T V.
All right, we're live, we're all up?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. This is the Maranick Planning Board meeting for May 26, 2021. In attendance with us this evening are planning board members Cindy Goldstein, Ellen Styler, Richard Littman, John Verney is excused tonight, and of course, I'm here. Also with us is Amber Novak, our village planner, Stephen Gates from A K R F, Frank Tavolacci, our village inspector, Esteban Garcia from Keller Sessions, Susan Oakley from Terrabella Landscape Design, and we expect our Landry's attorney, Teresa Baker to join us shortly, she's having technical difficulties. Okay. Oh, so we're discussing this, and I have it sticky in my hand, and I'm forgetting it. Okay, at our last meeting, we opened a public hearing and heard an application for 517 Walnut Street, and I just want to announce that the applicant has withdrawn the application. So if you're anyone who's watching who was interested in that application, there were a lot of comments from neighbors on that application, it's been withdrawn, just want to tell you. Okay, so we have sets of four sets of minutes, we're almost up to date with this, so that'd be great. We have minutes from March 24, 2021, I'm going to do these in date order. So does anybody have any comments on the minutes?
I have a typo on the March 24 minutes on page three.
And I got that one, too.
That was an easy one. But that's all I had, it should be who's not whose.
Yeah, and who's who's is spelled wrong, the third paragraph down. And then at the bottom, the very last sentence, there's a notice, please be advised that the Zoom video didn't come back on. I think that you just say, you know, note that this Zoom video didn't come back on when we came out of executive session. Other than that, that's all I had. So I need a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Okay, Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Next, we have minutes from April.
Oh, excuse me, Amber, looks like Teresa's in the waiting room.
I see, she just popped up now, and I immediately.
Okay.
Going to hear the panelists.
Either I, Cindy, thank you.
I know what it's like to be lost in the waiting room.
Lost in translation. Okay, minutes from April 14, 2021. Anybody have any comments? I have two typos. Page 10, and they're very similar typos, so it must have been. Fourth line up or fourth paragraph up from the bottom. It's just a typo, I'm charged, I do feel charged most of the time. Instead of chair, and then on the next page, middle of the page, Mr. Farmstone's first name is Chad, not. And other than that, I know, it's very similar. I have nothing else. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ellen?
Machine.
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Now we have minutes from April 28, 2021. Anybody have any comments or any questions, anything to add, anything on these minutes? I have nothing.
No.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
We got you got a thing going as well.
Indeed.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Oh, yes. And tonight, we have minutes from May 12. The Esther people. Oh, Teresa, we're getting from your. Yes, thank you. Okay. May 12, 2021. I have no comments, does anybody else have any comments, any anything on these minutes? No? Motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you very much for a little bit of housekeeping. That brings us to the first application on the agenda, which is 275 Maranick Avenue. The applicant is the Life Church, they have purchased the old CBS, the building where the old CBS was, and they are before us for a site plan to renovate the interior of the existing space, some minor exterior work. They were here, I guess, two weeks ago, and it's since been to H C Z M. So I guess, Amber, if you could promote the people who are here for 275 Maranick Avenue.
Good evening, Chair and Board, I was waiting to see if our counsel was on. Amber, do you see Adrian?
Sorry, who's your counsel?
It's either Paul Noto or Adriana. Do you see them on?
Paul is there.
Glass from the past, Mr. Noto. Okay, Mr. Bartlett, were you speaking?
I was going to just defer to Paul to start us off, and then I can chime in as needed.
Welcome back, Mr. Noto, you're muted. Paul, you're on mute.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, thank you, good to see you again.
It's been a while.
Well, it's nice to be back. And as you know, I represent the Life Church, which has purchased the property 275 Maranick Avenue. As you pointed out, Chair, it's the former CBS and a dry cleaner. We appeared before you two weeks ago at your last meeting. And in subsequent to that meeting, at that meeting, you concluded the secret process, and we appeared before the H C Z M and obtained a consistency determination. We've also made one appearance at the B A R, and there's a memo from Bill Binzer to you about some of the issues they raised at their meeting last week. So this is a change in use, which is why it's before you. There's the only exterior work is going to be on the facade. It's a C2, it's a pretty straightforward application. The internal work, as you know, is auditoriums, offices, restrooms, kids' rooms, things of that nature. So we are looking for a final site plan approval, so we can go and continue with the B A R. I think the issues they raised are issues that we could resolve with the B A R. It's, as you know, it's not a requirement that we get their approval prior to site plan, but obviously, we're going to have to work with them before we can get a building permit. And Adam is with us, and I think Barry, our architect, to answer any technical questions.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant with regards to the application? And then we received the memo from B A R that we might want to discuss a little bit. They're asking us to do to do a few things. This is a little tricky here, because once the planning board does give site plan approval, and you go back to B A R, B A R, their responsibility is to really the aesthetics, and they do raise a legitimate concern, I think, with the streetscape. But they don't have a lot of leeway to make a lot of changes. So maybe we could just talk a little bit about some of the options that might be available to to the applicant that B A R would be would be amenable to. They're asking us to allow a building permit for limited demolition to determine the facade conditions, which I'm not sure that's in the purview of the planning board to do. You know, the building inspector is the one who who issues building permits. So I don't know, does anybody have any comments or any thoughts on this matter?
Well, I certainly appreciate what the B A R is is looking into. I think it's it's very valid. It's a prominent location on Maranick Avenue. On the other hand, I can't see holding this up to try to get more detail, since obviously, there would have to be some investigatory work, removing part of the facade to see what's under there. So, you know, I'm thinking if the applicant is amenable to some of the street planters and some of the things that that can be figured out now, I don't know if you could ever word a resolution to say applicant will use their best efforts to work with B A R, but we can't be binding, you know, I think you either have the site plan or you don't.
Right.
I agree, and the answer to your question is yes. I mean, we had met with the, actually, before I was on board, my client had met with the village, actually, just around the time they closed, to discuss improvements to the high house walkway and some things that we could do to make it more appealing. And so the answer is yes, we are absolutely very much committed, because it benefits us as much as it benefits the village to make that a much more desirable and appealing place. So, yeah, we are definitely committed to working with the village to improve that streetscape.
I think there are other options besides adding articulation, which I'm not an architect, but I think I can guess what that means. Or discern what that means. There are other ways to break up blank wall. So as long as either the applicant is amenable to working with B A R to do that, I think it's in the best interest of all parties. Does anybody from?
Just speak from the, from an owner's perspective, of course, we want to work with B A R. We had, I feel like we had a good meeting with them, I mean, obviously, we didn't get approval. So but we appreciated all the thoughts, and I think it's good. And we're already planning to, in a couple of weeks, to go back to them and, you know, and propose some things. I think it might be a couple of iterations with them, so it would be very helpful to receive the, you know, the permit from the building department. I know that's not, you don't issue the permit here at the planning board, but it would be good to approve the site plan, so we could potentially have that permit with the stipulations of we will, we will have to, you know, receive approval from the B A R before we can do any new construction, new work on the facade.
Kathy, if I may, based on precedent, I think it's a bad practice to approve the site and then give B A R a shot at making changes. I call to your attention 620 East Post Road. So I am, I oppose to granting site approval until the plans are finalized.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't know that B A R can really. How much?
It's not up to, it's, no, it's, it's, it's the architect for the project should present something to us as part of the site plan. It's that simple.
Well, they did, and B A R didn't like it, and they were asking them to make some changes to it.
Right, and the facade is not, is not the site plan issue, the facade is the B A R issue. And so we, what you're, what you're, you're not approving the facade per se, you're approving the site plan. Actually, what you're really approving is the change in use. The only reason we're before this board is because it's a change in use, and the code says if you're changing the use, you have to get a site plan approval. But as I think.
But we're not.
We probably, I'd say 10 years ago, probably wouldn't have been before a planning board for a change in use like this, it would have just gone to the building department, because it's all internal.
But we're not, we're not planning in a vacuum. You know, this is in in the context of the main street of the of the village.
My understanding is that the planning board can approve the change of use without approval from the B A R. And with regard to the site plan, as Kathy said, there are different ways to address a blank wall that don't involve changing the plan at all. So while there was discussion about articulation and setbacks, et cetera, that there was no, I mean, there would need to be further study and investigation to what's possible and feasible to even consider that. You know, if the planning board wanted to approve the plans and the site plan based on what was presented, and, you know, perhaps discuss, you know, adding this stipulation that any, you know, superficial work or facade work would need to be determined with the B A R. My understanding is that that's, that's possible, but perhaps, Steve, if you want to weigh in there, if I've missed anything.
No, I mean, I think everything you said is accurate, yeah.
Plus, and the other part of it would be signage, and signage is generally the exclusive domain of the B A R, so that would also be part of the.
Right.
The side issue.
Right. Well, I don't have any problem with moving forward with approving the site plan. The, the, the project that Richard mentioned, there was a drastic change in the actual, it was new construction, and it was a change in the building that had been what had been approved by the planning board in H C Z M. So we've changed some procedures since then, where there's some B A R work happening at the same time as planning board, so we can have a little conversation back and forth and whatnot. But I, I agree, and as long as we have assurances, I think, from all parties, that the applicant will follow the code and work with B A R and come up with a solution. Nobody wants to have a an eyesore building on the on the avenue, especially in such a prominent location. It's the entrance for a lot of people right across the street, the buses come down, a lot of people get off at that bus stop right there to to enter our village. It's a, it's a very prominent location that I'm sure you want to look nice. Everybody wants to look nice.
But, you know, Richard, Richard has a good point, a site plan is a comprehensive plan. And, and I realize that the facade is a little bit, that is the jurisdiction of B A R, but the entire site is the jurisdiction of the planning board. So procedurally, I'm wondering, and maybe Frank or Teresa could help me with this. Signage goes to the B A R. What, at what point in the process does that happen? Because that's theoretically part of the site plan, if you will, as part of the changes to the building. Does that always happen after the planning board? And other boards have worked on an application?
So I think the intent here was to give a limited demolition permit or exploratory permit for the church to see what they have, what structurally is in place. So then they can come up with a plan of what they're going to face this building with, whether it be signage or or even, I think there was some talk of brick or something, I'm not sure. But the, the, the intent now is to just do a limited exploratory permit, so they can see what's what they have in front of them.
I understand that, I'm just wondering, though, of course, they're going to have signage. I have to have signage, it can't be a secret that it's a church. But, but that signage detail is worked out after site plan? Review?
Yeah, I think it is.
Usually.
I mean, I've seen, I've seen people come up even after the the building is completed.
Right.
It is typical for signage to be handled after the site plan approval. There's nothing unusual about that. The draft resolution that you all have in front of you has a condition that they'll obtain all other approvals necessary, including the Village Board of Architectural Review approval prior to the issuance of the building permit for the renovation of the building. So if they're going to do a temporary permit first in order to investigate the facade, we might, you might want to say, except for a temporary permit to to explore the facade. I assume, Paul, that's the intention, that's what you guys intend to do? Mr. Noto?
Yeah, well, for now, yes, that was a recommendation of the, the B A R recognized the catch 22 that we're in, that we can't really do anything without planning board approval, so we can't even do the exploratory work. So, yes, we are in agreement that we do that, and then come back to them with a more detailed plan for the facade. But as you know, the interior will not change.
Okay. What's the board's, what's the board's feeling on this with regards to approving the resolution for the site plan with stipulation about B A R?
I just, I'll just renew my objection, it's, it sets a very bad precedent. Development has to follow an orderly procedure.
But our code doesn't state that.
Well, that's nothing we can do about the code, but we can try to do the right thing.
Well, but I thought this was the procedure, that we get site plan, then we go to B A R and.
Exactly, that's what the code, that's the, that's the procedure.
That's why we used to do it, I mean.
Yeah, but, but you can't approve a site plan and then have changes afterwards. That's the problem. That doesn't make any sense.
Well, this is, I mean.
We certainly have lots of applicants that show up here that have done a significant amount of work on their property before they even put in an application. So at least this is a controlled process. Again, I'm, I'm concerned about the process like Richard is, but it is a bit of a catch 22, and there's no mechanism in the village to issue a temporary or very defined narrow permit to do some exploratory work on a on a piece of property. How can that be? Doesn't that seem?
I think, I think we're getting a little bit distracted here. Remember, this is a change in use. So the bottom line is the only changes that are proposed into the exterior of the building are very, very limited. They're not changing the parking, they're not changing, you know, they're just doing some basic renovation on the exterior to make it suitable for use as a church involving essentially painting and fixing up the facade. So you know, it really is very limited, the scope of the jurisdiction.
Right, I don't see this. You're removing the entrance where the dry cleaner was, is that correct? And then that would become an entire wall there, and that's the issue. It's.
It's not even quite that drastic. I think that the existing entrance to the dry cleaners is probably, if you're facing the building, is shifting to the right, probably six to eight feet, something like that. So it just creates a little bit more.
A little bit more.
Of solid space right there, and that was the main concern. And, you know, that's what we're getting, that was, that was one of the concerns, and there was just a couple of other thoughts about it. The building itself, as you guys are well aware, that it's, it's a little unique looking for the, from Maranick Avenue already. So I think there's some desire from the, from the bar to make it fit, make it fit the, the, the village. You know, that avenue a little bit more, to be a little bit more cohesive with the rest of the spaces. So we're trying to address some of that, because what we've proposed to do is, you know, is extremely similar to what is there now. So we're going to have to do a couple of other things. And so in order to do that, we do feel like we need, you know, it's an old building, so we've got a, it's a challenging, so that's challenging. So we need to be able to figure out what's, what's in it to see what we can, what we can realistically put back. Does that help, is that any?
Yes, it helps me, I mean, I'm, I'm ready to move forward. What about everyone else? And allow them to continue with B A R, work on the facade, because that's all this is. We're proving the change of, yes, I, it's a site plan, but I haven't heard anything that makes me think that there's going to be major changes that would be something that we wouldn't go forward with.
Well, I just have a question, if we, if we, if we didn't have this issue where the exploratory demolition were needed, would we be signing off on the final architecture anyway? Because I don't think so, right? I mean, we would.
You might be signing up on the final architecture, that's really part of the building permit plans for the facility. So usually, what you're working with is a bit of a rendering. You may have a pretty, pretty far advanced, what it'll look like, but it won't be the final, final product of what we're planning for.
So could we refine this condition in the resolution to talk, to refer to the facade on Maranick Avenue? And if it is, if we make it more specific, maybe that would make people more comfortable? Or does it not make it?
Doesn't, doesn't do anything for me, Cindy.
But I might note, if we did, if we did change the site plan in a dramatic way, it would get flagged, and we'd have to come back to you to amend the site plan.
But why, why didn't you have an architect prepare some drawings to propose what it looked like? It would make it a lot easier to visualize and, and maybe eliminate the problem.
Well, we don't, we don't have a B A R approval, so that was something we do for the B A R. That's why we go to the B A R.
Mr. Littman, we did have, I mean, we do have an architect, and we did have drawings and renderings of the front. They just want to see some changes to those. And again, I'm.
I would have liked to have seen what what the architect had in mind, not, not B A R. B A R wasn't happy with what you submitted, so you would have to submit something else. We would have liked to have seen some of those ideas. Maybe it would have facilitated the whole deal.
But in order for us to do that, part of that is we need to get some limited demolition. We can't do that now, without your permission. We're dead in the water until you act.
So I can call for a motion, and I.
Well, we could, we could always do a straw poll.
We could do a straw poll, call for a motion, see what happens. The B A R meeting was just last week, so I think to have to have a series of options, or you know, even just an idea whether they would work or not, it was just asking, that wouldn't have worked for us, you know, we get things for a deadline for tonight's meeting. So we do have the rendering of the original, it was some sort of a brick facade. And I guess that's what B A R didn't like, so.
So the brick facade wasn't articulated enough, I mean, that didn't provide enough visual interest. They, they were unhappy with the brick, is that what it was?
I think the inference was too much solid wall on the street face.
Okay, but brick is better than stucco, which.
So, sorry, if I can just interact, interject, there were, there were really two issues that came up during the B A R meeting. The, the board members discussed the, as, as the applicant stated moments ago, the feel of the aesthetics and the design not being in keeping with the, the commercial character of the street. of the street and, and looking more industrial was sort of the, the, the description. It was noted that, you know, they are working with the building itself that is not perhaps in keeping with that. But here is an opportunity um, where the applicant is, is able to make changes and they want to approve changes that would, you know, be in keeping with the character. The second issue was brought up by a, a member of the public who described that, you know, due to the, the changing of the storefront side into a blank wall, it wasn't conducive to connectivity of the street life. Um, and the board did propose, uh, you know, that the applicant consider some streetscape enhancements or some sort of urban design related way to address what would now be, um, you know, little connectivity in terms of, of the flow of traffic on the pedestrian corridor that that is. Um, and so that's something that the applicant did, was, you know, did express um, an interest in doing. And they, they described plantings or some sort of landscaping as a potential option. But all of this would need to be considered in light of what, you know, where the lot line is and what's feasible. Some, there were some discussion about seating. There was some discussion about a, a community board or some sort of like message board on that wall, something um, to integrate the, the blank wall into the corridor and the, the commercial space of the community there.
Well, that sure, that sure indicates, that sure indicates the relation of the, the church to the, to the site, to the, to the neighborhood.
Well, let me answer this, Mr. Noto. I don't know. Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you. Yeah.
Okay, great. So I'm sure that you will be in front of the B A R pretty quickly here with a revised rendering showing the landscaping in the front of the building. If, uh, if we can find a way to get you a temporary permit so you can do what you need to do in order to investigate the facade in the building. And here Frank, I'm asking you, is there some way they can get a temporary demolition permit for the front there so they can do the limited investigation that they would need to do? Because my sense is the planning board would like to see those final drawings rather than just entirely defer to the B A R. If we could achieve that, would, would you be willing to come back to another planning board meeting?
Yes, I mean, yeah, we would. I mean, we understand the concern. I think, I think the, the B A R chair laid it out for you pretty clearly that we, we cannot do anything without your permission. So your suggestion, Teresa, is a good one. Um, you know, we will have to come back if we have to come back. We're hopeful we can get this done fairly quickly. And that's, I don't know, Adam, we have to see. But it will really depend on how quickly we can get a, a demolition permit to check out the, the facade. So.
How, how big of an area do you need to demolish in order to determine what's underneath the facade?
Adam?
Does anybody know?
Hard to say. I think we would, oh, we would try to minimize it as much as possible because we don't want to, I mean, mainly, we don't want to leave the, the exterior of the building not watertight, you know? So we're going to have to.
And ugly. This would be like, you know.
And we don't, I'm not trying.
Surgery.
I just want to be clear that we're, I'm not trying to skip steps and, or anything that nature. So whatever we need to do, to do it the best way we can, we are willing to do it. You know, we're just, we're eager to, on the other side of the coin, we are eager to get in and we've owned the building for a year and it is, you know, it's just sitting there. So we're ready to, we're ready to go. Um.
So I guess the question is to Frank of whether or not some sort of a limited permit just to, to, you know, demolish some set facade to see what's underneath it.
Frank, if I could just ask you, if we approved the reuse of the building and had them come back with the, for the, uh, look at the facade, would our approval of the reuse of the building be enough to get that temporary permit that they need? Frank?
Yeah, so I'm not even talk about demolition as a permit. I think it's more of like any architect, when he's trying to see what's behind the sheet rock, what's behind the facade, whatever. Uh, they're doing probes, basically. They're making small holes in the front to see what's i, in the back. Uh, what the substrate is, what they're going to be attaching to, what they could put for a facade. So it's not really a demolition in the sense that they're going to take down the whole face of that building. They're going to do a couple of probes here and there, up high, low, left and right, to see what, what's there. That, that's, that's how I look at it.
Well, then my question is just, what do you need from the planning board in order to give them whatever approvals they need to do the probing?
I, I, I can't answer that. I, I don't know the answer to that.
You seem to be in uncharted territory here.
Well, the, the application is for change of use. I mean, that's, that's our site plan application. That's the only reason, the only reason we're in front of the planning board is for change, because we're changing the use.
Change of use.
Not because of the buildings.
Right, but you're, but it's a site plan.
Exactly. It's a site plan.
But site plan, we do look at more than just the change of use. I mean, you know that. I mean, yeah, what the section is and what the standards are for site plan review. It's not, you know, it's, it's more comfy than that. Right, right. So, all right, it's, you know.
Frank?
No, he's there. Yeah.
Sorry, he's moving on my screen. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I know. Everybody just moved around on my.
So Frank, do they actually need a permit to do that?
Yeah, I would make them take a permit. I'd be, I would want them to take a permit out for anything they did in the front. Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. So then we're in a catch twenty-two. They can't produce the drawings that they need without getting the, the permit from Frank. So um, you could. Well, you could, you could do a conditional approval on them coming back for you to look at the facade drawing. And any, you know, and any other changes. That's the other option that you have.
So that would be quicker than doing a permit application process to the building department. Is that right?
They would, they still have to get a permit from Frank. It's just that because you've taken the first step apparently, then Frank will become capable of issuing the permits to probe the facade. Do I have that right, Frank?
Yes.
So there is such, such a thing that we can do called a conditional approval to allow this to happen?
Yes. Yeah, you can do that. Um, it, it would just involve, you, you have the resolution in front of you. And so all we would need to do is change, change the resolution so that we add a provision um, that says that the approval is contingent upon submitting facade drawings to the planning board for further review. All right, so there'd be another, uh, there'd be another um.
Resolved?
So num, number three?
Yeah, yeah, do you, number three or number two? The way I would write it is, all application and consult review fees shall be paid prior to the issuance of the building permit for the renovation of the building. And two, the approval is contingent upon submitting facade drawings to the planning board for their review and approval. And then, three, the applicant shall obtain all required state, county and local permits and approvals, including village board of architectural review prior to issuance of the building permit for the renovation of the building, accepting for the temporary building permit to investigate the facade.
Is it really a permit or just like a preliminary permit?
It's still a village permit.
It's conditioned. The approval's conditioned on your further review and approval of the facade. Mr. Litman, does that address your concern?
Uh, procedurally, no.
But we get, we, we, we know the issue. You don't want to give it away, do you?
Uh, I, I, I think, I think Frank should find another, I think Frank should find another way to issue a temporary permit for the exploratory work. And then the applicant should come back to us with a complete application. We, we shouldn't be approving an incomplete application.
Or, or doing it piecemeal, I think is what you're saying.
Correct.
Complete, but it's, you know.
I, I want to make it clear. I, I'm not opposed to the use of the property. Uh, I, I, I wish there's something we could do to help you, but you got to follow procedure.
Well, we, from our perspective, we did. This is the procedure. We.
Right. This is.
Actually, if, if, if the village wants to change the procedure, then, and make, make your approval uh, and get a, B A R approval before you issue final site plan, that's fine. If the village trustees want to do that, then obviously we'll do it. Generally, that's not the way it's been done ever. And so it's always been B A R is the last thing you do. It's always an afterthought. And, you know, it's, again, it's a lot to do with signage and, you know.
There's no, oh, there's, there's no recourse. If, a, after a planning board adopts its resolution and B A R says, uh, make a glass wall or make a waterfall or something, you know, we have no control over it.
Right.
And that's the job of the planning board to make the decision.
Well, the V A R might disagree with you on that. But yeah, I mean, I, you know, this happens. You have boards that sometimes disagree with each other. Obviously, you know, it's a, i, from an applicant's perspective, it makes it harder for us because we, we're dealing with multiple boards and, and we obviously want everyone to be happy with our project. So from our perspective, we just want a predictable process and, and we'll follow whatever the village tells us to do. And that's what we've done, um, understanding your concerns on the facade. So what, what Ms. Backner proposed is fine with us. We'll, we'll, we'll do that. And as I mentioned earlier, if, if for any reason we, we changed the site plan, uh, as you know, we, we would be obligated to come back. We know the building inspector would, would flag it and we, we'd have to come back before you to amend our site plan, which, as you know, happens, you know, on occasion. So. Yeah, there, there are, there are checks and balances within the system to protect the village and protect you from something, as you described, you know, the B A R approving something off the wall. Um, yeah, there are certain checks and balances that would probably prevent that from happening.
Well, and I think the other check and balance is that, that they would come back. And while I, I don't think this is a, you know, perfect way to handle this, I, I'm fine with the um, additional clause that Teresa proposed to, to move this forward as expeditiously as possible. I, I think it, it solves our issues. It's not perfect from a process point of view, but I can live with that. Uh, we, we have so many things that are process oriented that are, just don't work at all. Just don't work at all.
Right. Okay. All right.
Amber, can I ask just a quick question? Um, we seem to be missing some members tonight. Who's, who's missing?
So John, Bernie.
That's all. We, we need, we would need three votes to pass and we have four people here. So we're, we're good. And, and, and frankly, uh, if indeed the village code states the procedure as, uh, as Paul, uh, Paul noted, Paul Noto noted. And I do believe that's the way it's been for a while. I mean, I've been involved off and on for a while and that's the way it was always done. Uh, we are following the stated procedure, whether we like it or not, whether we think it's the right procedure or not. This is what's codified in the village code. The fact that we could come up with a, a solution that works for everybody, um, I'm going to ask for a motion then to approve the resolution as amended.
Still moved.
And do I have a second? I'll second it myself. Okay? Let's take a vote on that. Ellen?
I vote yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
And I vote yes. So the resolution passes. Go do your exploratory surgery, see what you come up with, and we expect to see you back when you have a, a solution you think is workable and will satisfy all parties.
Thank you. We thank you very much. We appreciate you moving this along so quickly and it's, we, we'll, we'll get it done. Thank you.
And we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. And you're going to be proud. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Followed to the grand opening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next application on the agenda for one twenty-four Palmer Avenue. Um, we need to promote the parties. I saw Mr. Spatz was here briefly before. We bring him back.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning board. Andrew Spatz.
Oh, there you are.
Hey, on behalf of.
Okay, you have, have your posse with you, I see.
Just a few, just a few. And I think it's very timely. We're talking sports cards and the Knicks are in the playoffs at seven thirty. So this is good. This is good, Chair. Thanks for having us back this evening. Are we all on board? I want to make sure Eric, Scott and Ryan Dempsey. Although I don't think we really need Brian, but Amber, Brian Summer.
Are you going to be doing the speaking for the applicant?
I am going to briefly speak and I think um, it's going to be, it's going to acquire very little, I think, I am, I'm hoping. I can't use up all my words tonight, but in any event, for the record, Andrew Spatz, six, six, six fifty Halsted Avenue, Suite one oh five, Amerenek, New York one oh five four three, on behalf of one twenty-four Palmer Avenue, L R E Fellers, Ferris LLC in Star Stock. Good evening. We appeared most recently before the H C Z M on May nineteenth. And we actually made the one-touch test, which doesn't happen much due to section two forty-five, which required us to appear. But they did find that we were consistent and we're very pleased by that. And as you recall, we originally appeared before the planning board back in March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one because of Article eleven, Section three forty-two seventy-five B, which requires approval for any change of use or intensity of our premises other than a one or two family dwelling. On April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one via letter, and this was following due diligence and additional dialogue we had with the village consultants, we decided to proceed with the original request made for change of use from a sports club, which was formerly the New York Sports Club, to just a professional office rather than any type of assembly. I'm pleased to share that none of the parameters set forth in Section three forty-two seventy-five B will be impacted by the intended use of the premises of an office by the new tenant, Star Stock. Specifically, parking, loading, circulation, drainage, utilities, landscaping or outdoor lighting, absolutely nothing will be impacted whatsoever. In fact, the proposed use is actually less intensive than what was previously enjoyed by the New York Sports Club. Moreover, Section three forty-two, attachment number three reflects the fact that the applicant would not require any off-street parking as the property is located in the C two commercial district. There's no plan to increase the existing floor space. It should also be noted that Article eight, Section three forty-two fifty-three also reflects the fact that off-street parking is not required in C two. And as conveyed during the original presentation before, uh, this, the planning board, a successful business previously operated out of one twenty-four Palmer Avenue, but like others, suffered the wrath of COVID. However, through that misfortune, an opportunity for a local resident to open a business here in the village. And we. And we believe that this potential is extremely unique, tech-based, paving the opportunity to provide employment and hands-on internship experiences for students in our community. And budding entities like Star Stock are certainly a part of the vitality and great appeal of Marinerick. Hence, we most certainly would ask this evening that, uh, we move forward with the approvals. Uh, again, Eric, who is the landlord, Scott, who is proprietor of Star Stock, who's here, Brian, we're all available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Um, any, uh, and I don't think we had any problem, we, we really are just basically down to the end here. There was one issue that came up with our landscape architect with regards to, um, some street trees that you have room for, did you see the latest memo? Well, actually, it was from April 16.
I never actually saw that, uh, memo. Um, we sort of, we most certainly would have addressed it, circulated it. Uh, and obviously, any approvals tonight, we was, we would factor that in. Um, if you want to share with us what that memo stated.
I sent it to you on May 24th.
Oh, two days ago.
Second, May 24th, let me, hold on one second.
Well, Susan can explain.
While he's.
And sorry, this is the memo from, it, it is dated the 24th, I mean.
Is that, I just wanted to make sure this is for, uh, 124 Palmer, not Oriente.
That's my mistake.
We don't have landscaping.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I don't think we have landscaping, I would love. They're, they're definitely fruitful individuals in this building, but I don't think that there was any previous landscaping.
No, um, well, Susan's here, um, Susan Oakley. There's a memo from Susan to the planning board dated April 16th. I'm not sure if you didn't even get it, but it basically said, it basically says, on this walk-up Palmer Avenue, the street is devoid of trees. And, uh, she re- is recommending the addition of two street trees in the landscape beds that flank the entrance of the parking area to the right of the building. Um, which, uh, she included a photograph in her memo of, uh, there's some shrubs there now, is that correct, Susan?
Yes.
Right.
And due to the fact that only three parking spaces are needed for the employees, it lends itself to even, you know, to making sure that those plant beds are large enough and adhere to the village code for plant beds in parking areas. So they could be increased due to needing only three parking spaces for employees. The, the size of the plant beds could be increased.
Is that the code to be increased or is that just a recommendation that they should be increased?
There's a certain, there's a code for the size of a plant bed so that trees, uh, receive the proper amount of rainfall and that they're surrounded by permeable surface. So I can send that.
And, and what's the, what's the relevance to that for how many parking spaces? Because. Well, Eric, if I can, I'm gonna just interject a second, wait, Derek, if I can. I don't want to go into parking because as I stated before, parking's not an issue based upon the fact of the code itself, so let's not. I, I, I don't want to get lost in the, in the, no pun intended, in the trees of the woods here. Let's just, if this is a recommendation, it's something that obviously the property owners could factor in. Again, I, I'm not, I, I don't, I didn't see the photographs, I haven't seen this. I'm thinking that this issue is not gonna delay the ability for a new tenant to go into a premises here in the village of Marinerick when there's absolutely no change of any exterior or anything other than the fact that it's a new tenant, so. Sure, Teresa, no problem, yeah.
I think Susan's just suggesting that you spruce the place up.
I, you know what? I, I, Scott, I see two thumbs up from Scott, I don't think that's a problem at all, Teresa, at all. That's why I'm saying, I, I let's, I don't want to, we were going to a direction, I, I want to bring it back to, hey, we're here, again, we want to make everyone happy, this is a great business, the landlords really want to make people happy as well. So I, I, I think we can hit a balance here of, obviously, Ms. Oakley is well-respected, she's looking out for the village as well. I, I, this is not gonna delay our, our process tonight, I, we're gonna get, we're gonna figure this out, I, I know we will.
Okay. So where does that leave us? Does anybody else have any, uh, issues or questions or anything that they want to raise? Anyone on the team from 124 Palmer? No, I think this is pretty straightforward, okay? So, uh, the draft, the draft resolution we have, would we have to amend this one as well? To add that, uh, the applicant would work with the owner of the building to add, uh, trees?
I think we should keep it very simple. So right now, we have two conditions, both of which are very standard. Um, so I would just add an additional condition that the applicant agrees to refresh the landscaping at the facility.
I can't see that landlord have a problem with that. Eric?
I would emphasize, uh, heavy, heavy emphasis on trees rather than trees.
Well, can, can we make a, can we make a reference to Ms. Oakley's memo as a guideline?
Why don't, why don't we say the applicant agrees to enhance the landscaping? Based, based upon the April, uh, what was, what was the date of it, April?
The 16th.
April 16th memo from, uh, Ms. Oakley. All right, is that already received?
And, uh, Eric, uh, Nick, you're the property owners.
Yeah, we'd like to see the memo, but I'm sure it's not a problem.
I agree.
I just say, and I, Teresa, I'm sure you couldn't understand what my point of view, I don't want to get lost in translation with regards to an improvement, what's the improvement, what kind of tree? If they, i- i- if the landlord likes a certain type of tree versus what may be suggested in a, a, you know, by a consultant, you know.
There's a, there's a list of approved street trees in the village, for the village of Marinerick, so you get to pick from the list.
I mean, it's not a big bed, right? There's one bed there, right? So it can't be.
That's the only reason, Eric.
It's somewhat limiting, so we'll, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll consult whatever the approved list is and we'll take care of it.
Okay.
That's a fair, I think that's a fair statement.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any other issues, questions? Okay, um, so Teresa, besides that change, is there any other change then to this, um, resolution? I know I had some questions about the, the, the third warehouse clause with the list of the documents. I didn't feel like it was, I had a lot more documents in my files than what was listed here. Unless I'm missing some, I could very easily have done today, it wasn't the good.
Well, I guess, I guess I have a little trouble hearing you again, is it that I, the list doesn't include everything or the list has more on it?
The list has more, there's five documents. Cause I have.
I'm pretty confident we have all of those at the, at the, at the village, uh, in the village system. Amber, you took a look at those too, didn't you?
I'm sorry, um, so we have the documents. We have the documents posted on Novus, which are publicly accessible from the website, and we have the documents posted to the share drive, which is what we use to share with the commissioners. So I, I saw them in there in terms of what was described, so I'm, if there's a document missing, just let me know which one in particular it is and we can try to find it.
My question here is, there's, there's a list of documents here that's on file and that's what we considered when we reviewed this. But yet, I have parking analysis, and I have other documents, you know, the landscape memo that we just went over to. Um, I, I, that's all. Two parking analysis, in fact, one and then a revised one, so.
Why, why don't we just say the application consists of the following documents, among the others, on file with the village of Marinerick? And that'll give us the ability to add them to the list later, okay?
Okay.
May I just ask, uh, Amber or Susan, if you could, to send me that memo? Or I could go online into the portal and grab that, that would be great, I'd really appreciate it. Again, this is not earth-shattering, a honeytended. That's, 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 no, no problem, I just.
When it was created.
You have the docs that they want to see.
All right, okay. So we have a, we have a resolution as amended, so I need to approve the, the resolution, uh, with the two amendments that Teresa just mentioned.
So moved.
Any second. Okay, um, Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I, yes.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and, uh, I know that Scott and his team, they're gonna make you proud, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
A couple minutes.
Go next.
This brings us to the next item on the agenda. 650. Okay, uh, we have an open, we have an open public here, uh, public hearings on this, uh, application, uh, which is for a, um, improvements, it's a, we have an application for a wetlands permit and site plan for improvements to an existing single-family residence. Okay, so, uh, we'll have to promote the, and Andrew, this isn't yours, right?
Yeah, no, I just was, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So you have to leave and.
I'll leave, I'll come back, thanks.
You can come back, so, so, cause you're, you're on for number four.
Yes, Chair, I'll see you in a little bit.
We could have had you go back to back, but we thought that Mr. Bernie was gonna be here and he's recused, so we put.
All good.
You can leave, all right, bye, we'll see you in a little while.
Catch that Nick game, I'll see you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Tony Joffrey, member of the law firm Cuddy and Fader, here on behalf of applicants Caroline Young and Stevie Trackenbury, who are here, uh, on the screen. We did appear before you on April 28th, I do have in my notes that you did close the public hearing by a 5-0 vote that evening. Um, and since we last appeared before you, uh, we did appear and obtain approval from the B A R on May 20th, so I'm pleased to report that, uh, to you. And there were two issues that you asked us to investigate or provide additional information at the last meeting. Uh, the first was you asked us to provide some additional landscaping between the neighborhood and property line, uh, which was done, and we provided, uh, a plan to demonstrate that, as well as, uh, address the Tarabella memorandum. We did provide, uh, additional information addressing those comments uh, and providing, uh, a low note in, uh, the Tarabella April 28th memorandum, um, that there were some additional notes being requested, which were all added to the plans. Um, so I believe we satisfied all the remaining, uh, your consideration. Um, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you do have.
Okay. Okay.
Tony, just a point of confusion, you said that we closed the public hearing last time and my record were that we continued and that there was a wetlands permit application that was noticed and that we, that that hearing is still open.
Okay, I, that, whatever, whatever works, I'm rather on the side of conservative procedure. I just have in my notes that the public hearing was closed, but.
The minutes say the public hearing was closed as well.
Okay, and that would have been the wetland hearing.
We're too public, but, uh, I'm not sure, I don't remember what happened when they first came to us, it's so long ago. But you got a lot done in that time. So, okay, whatever you think we should do, we'll do. Um, okay, does anybody have any other questions, comments? We did see the, uh, um, response to Ms. Oakley's memo and, uh, changes to, uh, the screening, um, on the, as you face the property on the left side of the property. So I don't think there are any outstanding issues, anybody on the planning board or any of our consultants have any outstanding issues still on this one? No, okay, so, um, Teresa, uh, do you feel that we need to close the public hearing? Or both public hearings or, or?
It's likely possible my notes were wrong. But, uh, I don't know, is anybody here from the public to speak?
Yeah, uh, all right, so if there's anybody here from the public who wants to speak, you can raise your hand and that will determine whether or not we're gonna, uh, open and close the public hearing, so. Um, Amber, you'll be looking to see if anybody raises their hand.
I do not see anyone who wishes to speak.
Okay, okay, so based on that, um, if, I, I, I think the same thing happened this time, so, um, it's hard to say with the minister, they don't really capture every single detail. Close one and let it go, so Teresa, tell us what you think we should do, we should.
Let's just know that no one was here to speak and that both public hearing, the public hearing on the site plan, the wetland, is closed.
Right, cause we, our action, our action used to, uh, to close the public hearing, so. Okay, so because, uh, you know, no one's here to speak and, uh, so I need a motion to close the public hearings on both the wetlands permit and the site plan.
So moved.
Okay.
Good choice.
All right, um, Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we have a draft resolution before us. Okay. Does anybody have any comments or any changes or anything on the draft resolution? No, nothing, okay, do I have a motion to approve the, uh, resolution as presented?
Where is it? So moved.
Second.
Okay, all right, here's a vote to approve the resolution. Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, sweet.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time and your efforts.
Thank you. Go forward and good luck. That brings us to the final application of the evening. I have to tear Mr. Spatz away from the Knicks game.
You're tearing him away, who, who moved and seconded that last one?
I'm sorry. All right, what else is here for the, um, 1025 Rush Morave, Oriente Beach Club application? Okay, um, now, this is the one, we have to open up wetlands, right? Um, and then we have a site plan, we have a wetlands permit and a site plan application for us. So.
Chair, again, I didn't even get a chance to, uh, check out the score, but, uh, Andrew Spatz, the applicant, Oriente Beach Club, 25 Rush Morav, um, I'm gonna let Amber promote our team, I see Elo, Mark.
Who else needs to be?
Yes, we would need, uh, let's see, uh, Richard Horstman, uh, Beth Evans.
I don't see Beth Evans on.
That is not, okay, uh, she may be, I know she had to appear virtually in Scarsdale as well this evening. That is not, okay. She may be, I know she had to appear virtually in Scarsdale as well this evening. Nunezio, Nunezio present?
Yes.
Okay. Richard, I think, so I think, okay, we're all on board. Am I missing anybody? No, I think we're good.
Okay, so what you been doing?
We're trying to find the Knicks game. That's what I've been trying to do, Chair. Yes, good evening, Andrew Spatz.
A while since we saw you.
For the applicant. Been busy, Chair, and members of the planning board. We most recently on April twenty first received consistency by H Z M. They found that was consistent with the L double R P. And subsequent to our initial appearance before the planning board on December ninth, we did file a wetland permit application. I hope everyone recalls what it is that we're trying to do. We're just, again, replacing an existing patio with an overhang. The net increase would be six hundred ninety, six hundred ninety-two square feet, but would include a water retention system where none currently exists. I'm pleased to share that also there is a net zero fill within the wetland buffer. And the improvements will also include the installation of an overhang, which will permit greater use of outdoor patio during inclement weather. And obviously, as we go get through this global pandemic, provides options for people to have outdoor dining. Additional documents, Chair, and members of the planning board have been provided subsequent to my brief appearance two weeks ago. And I just want to go through those items. One was a memo prepared by Richard Horstman dated May twentieth, which addresses the comments with, I did see this one, Susan Oakley had two different comments, March second, twenty twenty-one, and May seventh. And Mr. Horstman addressed that, where he provided additional drawings that reflected plant bedding, light fixtures, tree fence protection detail, plant list, planting details, planting specifications, and additional information with regards to the plan that unfortunately, they have to remove an existing shoregrew maple. It is possibly diseased or has damage from insects. So they're gonna be replacing that with a gray birch tree. But Richard, that is his show. I don't want to take his thunder away, no pun intended, because it's kind of lightning tonight, but he's, he's present. But that did address Ms. Oakley's concerns. Number two, per inquiry made during the course of the public hearing on May twelfth, a memo was prepared by Beth Evans of Evans Associates Environmental Consulting, Inc. That memo was dated May fourteenth, and it addressed the location of a coastal erosion hazard area, C E H A, in proximity to the Oriented Beach Club property. In addition to that memo, a map was also provided reflecting the boundary, which exists near the existing seawall, but not near the area of the proposed work for the existing patio. And based upon that, Ms. Evans concluded that, quote, "No review or approval is necessary from N Y S D E C relative to the C E H A regs," unquote. So that was number two. Number three, the last document that was provided was from Nunezio Pritchett Sante. That was dated March first, twenty twenty-one, providing additional information per the presentation that we had on December ninth. And also there was a revised SWIP from February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, which reflected two minor revisions. One, which was a reduction from two hundred and fifty square feet to two hundred square feet of impervious surface, which is a good thing. We like that for the proposed lower walkway. And also the installation of a permanent perimeter planting bed. So those are the three global type of docs and memos that I'm hoping that everybody received and had a chance to review. But most fortunately, our team is assembled, ready to answer any questions that you may have. So hopefully, we can proceed with a resolution this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Now, Esteban, you're here from Keller Sessions. You had approved the stormwater management plans system that it meets all code and meets requirements. I think there was a question with regards to, someone put a stamp on the drawings that said you had approved the drawings, but I don't think that was Keller Sessions. You haven't put approvals on other people's drawings. I think that was just a note from the applicant. And do you have anything else to add to anything that was presented by Mr. Spatz?
Uh, no.
Well, I, I have two things. I want to ask the, you know, thank the applicant for addressing that coastal erosion hazard area issue, because that's a big deal. You know, this is eight and a half acres directly on Long Island Sound, which is a critical environmental area. And I actually remember some improvements made to this property back in twenty seventeen, when I sat at a different commission. And, and as part of that application, the club applied to D E C and got a determination that the courts, paddle tennis courts and the parking, which is on completely the opposite side of the property from where these current improvements are proposed. And they do talk about the SEHA and that area. And I, I'm just wondering, you know, I, I do appreciate Ms. Evans' memo and the, you know, the enhanced drawings of where the tidal wetlands are. But normally, don't you go to D E C and have them make a decision about whether or not they have jurisdiction over all of this? I mean, I don't see any distance lines on this latest drawing. So I see where the SEHA line is. I see where the tidal wetlands line is, but I, I can't tell, you know, the distances between them. And as I said, you know, now that there's actually something being done on the water side of the property, I, I think it's up to D E C to make their determination. Otherwise, it's a, it's a permit process. We can't just kind of waive that on behalf of D E C. So I'm just, I think that standard procedure is to go to D E C and get a determination letter. And as I said, that's certainly what was done four years ago with a completely different kind of project. So I wish Ms. Evans was here so that I could really confirm that that's standard operating procedure.
We also had just made aware of a document. I, I think this just came, or I could be wrong. It was part of the file. It's a rear terrace topographic survey dated November twenty fourth, twenty twenty by Andes Consulting Engineering and Surveying. And that shows the C H E line on the interior of the seawall, but not, but not near the construct, well, it's near, but it's not, the construction's not in the hazard zone, the hazard area. So I'm not sure what's going on.
Well, I think anytime a property contains a SEHA, that, that it is impacted, that has a line on it, D E C is notified. So they can decide whether or not this comes within their jurisdiction for a permitting process. And I really don't want to cut D E C out of this. I, I agree. It looks like it's okay on these plans, but I see some dotted lines that says, that says the number of feet here, there, and the other place. Some reason, four years ago, this, the applicant decided to go to D E C and check this out. When you're building that much closer, I just, I just think it's a step that was missed. And I, I, I think we should, somebody should contact D E C and get something for the file.
Goldstein, I, I actually, can I just maybe suggest something? I just emailed Ms. Evans. She is still in Scarsdale on that virtual presentation. I advised her that we need her over here in Mamaroneck. So maybe, can we just table this momentarily? I don't want to take y'all track. I know, but I'm not dismissing it, but maybe there are other issues we can talk about. And then by the time we get back to SEHA, she will be able to participate, because I don't want to put words in her mouth, and I certainly don't want to misrepresent anything, because we want to make this right. We want to do this transparent. So if we could just maybe put this on the side for a second and hit any other issues. And I'm trying to reach Beth right now to see when she can join us.
We'll, we'll, we'll cover another issue then.
Great. Thank you.
I just want to stay on this for a minute, because, you know, A K R F didn't flag this either as, as something that had to go to D E C. So Stephen, if you want, I, I don't know if you have anything to add to this, because normally, we rely, we would rely on you all to flag this.
Yeah, one of my colleagues, who is a natural resources expert, took a look at the Beth Evans memo and agreed with what she said. She also reviewed the map and where the, the SEHA line goes and agreed that, that the project would be outside the boundary and wouldn't require D E C coordination because it's outside of the, of the boundary. I'm not, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Goldstein, about the property, the line going through the property, but, but since it's outside of the boundary, I don't think that that would require.
I, I guess I, you know, short of an actual survey, that someone that puts on the distances, I, I kind of need to see, you know, a technical analysis of it. And again, I think it's up to D E C. I don't know what D E C's rules are, but I think if there's a SEHA on the property, the standard procedure is to go to them and say, this is what we're doing. Are you cool with this? And they probably will say yes. But again...
Talking about distances, are you talking about a buffer from that line?
And, and where the line goes. And yeah, buffer, it just, it's not up to us to determine whether or not D E C decides they want to grant, needs to grant a permit on something like this. But let's table this. I agree with Mr. Spatz. You know, I, when I went into my package, I was looking for a SWIP, and I found the document labeled SWIP, but they're three pages. And I know, for example, some of the other engineers, in fact, all of them, who give us something called a SWIP, have about a hundred and twenty pages. They're, they're very specific documents. I don't pretend to understand all of the words and certainly none of the numbers in there, but there's a table of contents. There's a standard procedure that you follow. And I, I see that they're saying that they're noting all of the best management practices, and the details are all on the plans. Well, that makes it really hard, certainly for a novice like me to review. I'm going to assume it would be hard for our engineer to review. It probably took more time because you're switching back and forth between documents and pages. So, I mean, I would certainly, if other members of the planning board agree or not, but I would certainly want to see a comprehensive document that, that looks like a traditional legally defined and mandated stormwater plan. I mean, this is a site right on Long Island Sound. You know, it's a gathering place for many people. We do appreciate the clubs. They are the life force of this village. The village has taken a lot of steps to protect access to the water. And I, I think every member of this board agrees with that. Nobody's looking to slow anything down, but I, I don't think we can start relaxing standards with regard to stormwater, because it sets a bad, bad precedent. So hopefully, the applicant would be able to incorporate what they've already put on the plans into a single document for our records for, you know, for the village and to comply with, with the code requirements.
Goldstein, and I can appreciate exactly, if I can, Amber. Beth is waiting in the waiting room, so when you get a chance, let, let's promote her when you can.
Here now.
Talking about stormwater. I could certainly take and appreciate your concern with that type of management. As you know, I, in the past, I've served on many committees based and geared towards that. I would definitely like to defer to our engineer team, Nunezio and Peter. I, and also, to some extent, Richard, who, you know, with the landscaping to, that was geared towards addressing any type of runoff or, or water management issues. On, again, right now, we have an existing patio where there is no type of system in place, and the replacement would certainly incorporate one that would more than suffice the eight and a half acres that the property sits on. But again, I'm not dismissing it. We, we, I want to entertain it and so that you can walk away saying, you know what? Yeah, they are doing the right thing. This is taking our concerns as a village into consideration, and I'm confident that the team can. So Peter and, and Richard and Nunezio, this is your time.
If I could chime in. Basically, you can't compare this project to the project in two thousand seventeen. They added about twenty thousand square feet of impervious surface there, which, I don't know how many, forty, fifty cul tech units. It was all added impervious surface, digging up major construction project. This is only adding a net increase of six hundred ninety-two square feet, and we're providing for more, for more detention than, than is required. We, you know, the, I can't put a hundred pages of references and whatnot for a six hundred ninety-two square foot project. This is sufficient a, a, as an engineering document to, to lay out the soil erosion control measures during construction. Everything is detailed in the drawings. Everything's listed on the three-page report. Anything more than that, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a little crazy to, to, to say we're gonna, we, we need fifty pages or a hundred pages of, of document for six hundred ninety-two square feet. As Andrew said, we're providing cul techs. There, there is no detention on the site for the existing patio that's there now. So we're providing that. Keller Sessions reviewed the plans and, and they obviously approved them. There was no kickback on that. They had a few items that we addressed, you know, back and forth, I think, a couple of comment letters.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm not, I, I don't want to get too far afield. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with the Mr. Spatz, you know, way of doing things, which, which I think will keep us on track. I am not disputing any of your calculations, any of your plans. I, a SWIP is a SWIP. There's no, there's no differentiation in the code in terms of the size of the project. Maybe there should be, but that's not for us to deal with. So that, you know, it, it should be done the right way. The elements may all be there in a bunch of different places. I think they need to be in one place in a document that is much more comprehensive. That sounds like the work has been done. All the information is there. Obviously, Mr. Garcia went through it and determined that that was okay. It's the presentation of it. Because I don't, I don't want this to start happening. I can see a big project coming in here saying, well, we don't need to do it because the club didn't do it. I, I don't want to have that discussion. I want to comply with the code.
We've done it. There's a report and there's six drawings that go along with it. This S P one through S P six, that's all part of the package. I, I don't understand, you know, I'm not, I'm not, if you're asking for a binder with, you know, a title page and, and all of that, we, we have the letter. It's a SWIP. It has all the information that's required on a SWIP. And all the details, all the erosion control measures, the procedures, the protection during construction at the closeout, everything is there.
The good news is, I, I will say, just so I can interject, we appeared, I'm gonna say, three times, maybe four times in front of H Z M. And we, the process was vetted thoroughly. In fact, that's how we arrived at zero, zero fill on, in the, in this particular area. So...
Mr. Spatz, I'm not, I'm not disputing any of that, but H Z M C's purview is for best management practices. It is the planning board's responsibility to deal with the SWIP in its entirety. So I'm making a suggestion. Other members of the planning board may or may not agree with me, but I, I would expect to see a comprehensive document in one place that can be referred to. I applaud that it's on the plan. Perfect. Terrific. It should be on the plan, the details. But we should have a properly conformed SWIP to the code. And that's a single document containing all the legal elements required for a SWIP. That's my only point. So it, it's not possible to take the data that's already available, that's on the sheets, that's in the executive summary, which is what I would call it, and put it into a comprehensive document.
A comprehensive document would be the three pages of the report attached to the six drawings, and you have one document. I, I don't know what more than that, that you're looking for.
I, I'm looking for the kind of SWIP that we get for every single other project. Large or small. So it, look, maybe it's just me, but I, I am uncomfortable without having the kind of document that's, I mean, there's this template online. It's not, you know, it's pretty easy to follow.
Can I ask Teresa a question? Teresa, to your knowledge, is there a requirement in our code with regards to SWIP submission and what mandate needs to be?
No, I, I know.
No, I I know, I know, Blue Stone, there is a requirement in D E C's code for SWIPs for projects where they're going to affect more than one acre. I believe in the past, you've relied upon the engineer Esteban uh, as to whether or not the information that was presented is the information that's required by the code. It's, it's very much an engineering decision because, you know, there'll be only ones who can say whether or not it's sufficient to show that you're not going to have more stormwater leaving the site than you had before. And that it will be treated in terms of the water quality. So Esteban, now's your time to speak up.
All right. Um, so from the information that was was provided, uh, I'm in agreement with Ms. Goldstein that, um, you know, stuff was in different information and and per reviewing, I guess, other SWIP from other engineers, um, they do tend to, you know, for example, I guess, one from from uh, Hudson Engineering would be a little bit more comprehensive, which I'm assuming is what Ms. Goldstein is used to seeing. But in this case, um, you know, wouldn't be, it wouldn't be so hard to uh, put a comprehensive document like Ms. Goldstein is saying. Um, but per uh, what I did review, it seems that everything, you know, the the project is meeting um, what the code requires uh, for this. Now, if the, if the board wants to see something more comprehensive, it it is up to the board to um, to allow or like not force the applicant, but to, um, if it's a requirement that it needs to be requirement, you know, it's up to the board whether they want to do that or not uh, for the, for the project.
Okay.
Here, if I can, I, what I'm seeing is obviously form versus code requirements. We satisfy.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Section two ninety-four dash eight of the Village Code, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans, Stormwater Prevention Plan, blah, 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 uh, for one thousand square feet for area disturbance, uh, greater than one thousand square feet. Okay, uh, and it should be prepared in accordance with the specifications in this chapter. And then section B, Contents of Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans. All SWIPs shall provide the following background information, and then it goes through a whole long list of everything that needs to be in a document called a SWIP.
We're, it was for more than a thousand?
For more than a thousand.
Six ninety-two.
No, area of disturbance. You have more than a thousand square feet area of disturbance. That's what kicked you into requiring a SWIP. Because area.
No, no, I got, you know, I'm thinking. I stand corrected. Chair, I stand corrected.
So, so we're past that point. Everybody agrees that you needed a SWIP. The question is, did you need a SWIP that was in accordance to the code or could you put it in any format you wanted? Okay, now, uh, Esteban was nice enough to piece it all together, uh, instead of uh, saying what, you know, you need a document, but I'm reading this, uh, and I'm not a lawyer and I'm sure Teresa's got it up on her screen right now.
Just play one on TV at night. That's it.
I, yeah, right. I don't pretend to even play a lawyer on TV. But it appears that the, our code does require a document called a Stormwater Prevention Plan with all the documents, with all the pieces that's listed here in this section of the code.
Teresa, Ms. Wagner, would it be possible, assuming, again, I don't know if there are any other questions, concerns, and I'm sure Nunzio and the team could put this together. Again, it does not seem like something that is extraordinarily complicated. But then again, that's way above my pay grade, but a resolution that's contingent upon the submit, I mean, so we know that what we provided to date satisfied the code requirements. Let's talk about form. The form, I agree, I understand the concerns that planning board has. If we're able to sup- supply that as part of the condition of the resolution might balance everyone's concerns. And again, I'm not Nunzio, I'm not an engineer. It it seems like this is something that could certainly be obtained and provided to you, but I hate to see this getting pushed back further due to a formality because we've already established sort of the code requirement. So maybe that's a nice balance of, um, here. Let me see, maybe.
I guess I'm, I'm a little bothered by the fact that one of the things that we know we're looking at here is stormwater. And we know we've got to comply with the stormwater provisions. So Esteban, when you say that you reviewed it and that you, that you signed up on the stormwater, is there any technical element that's missing from what you reviewed based on the code?
Uh, no.
Okay, so.
Within which it's presented. I think that's the issue. It's form over function.
It's not over function. It's, it's form in addition to function. I I cannot see how we can justify requiring a comprehensive document from future applicants if an executive summary and a few pages of plans will suffice. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it follows either our code or D E C, um, the state code, um, for this. As I said, I, I I've never seen SWIPs. We, we know what the SWIPs look like. And that's a SWIP. Calling a few pages a SWIP is not, does not make it a SWIP.
Okay, but so the question, the question that's in front of us presently is, since we know the engineering information was available, are you, as a board, comfortable approving the resolution conditioned upon the submission of a SWIP in a form satisfactory to Esteban based on the code? Because you, you can make such a condition, but you should only do it if you're comfortable that all the technical requirements have been met.
Well, can we table that for a second since we have Ms. Evans here? I, I, so we can deal with that other issue and then maybe let her go back to her other meeting.
Okay, let's.
With Starling from Scarsdale. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Appreciate it.
I understand the, the question was regarding the C-Haw line. It is, uh, the custom, uh, right now at D E C, the first thing we do is to review their mapping. And as you know, their mapping was done in the nineteen eighties. It was done on the basis of a blueprint and it was done with a fairly thick line. The, the surveyors typically pick that line up as a ten-foot wide line. I reviewed the map, uh, for the beach club and it is my opinion that the C-Haw line that's shown on their map is well, uh, seaward, near the seawall and not near the patio that is being worked on. So I don't think there's any need for uh, going to D E C to try to get a determination. They are, they are pretty swamped right now, working remotely, many of them still. I am quite sure that what is proposed in this application is not within the C-Haw jurisdiction.
Putting, putting aside their workload, uh, wouldn't though that be standard practice in the beginning of any project that's on Long Island Sound that comp- is comprised of eight and a half acres? I mean, I've always seen that before.
We have, I I believe, uh, Cindy, you were the chair of the H C Z M when I first, uh, worked for Orianta and we went through that for the parking lot and got confirmation that, uh, no part of of that action was within the C-Haw line. And it was actually that diagram, uh, that I pulled up for, for this application. I, I, um, respectfully, I, I, I try to be very careful with C-Haw when I'm on any property on Long Island Sound or near Long Island Sound to make sure that, uh, C-Haw is not involved because it is a complicated and involved process to get them to review and, uh, if necessary, make a determination on their boundary. So, um, it was.
I, I appreciate that. I do understand that. I, I just, administrative convenience is probably not gonna sell.
I don't think this is administrative convenience. I think this is, uh, now, uh, when it was Sandy, five or six years of looking at their C-Haw maps. Believe me, if I think there's a chance that it, uh, is near C-Haw, I will ask the surveyor to put it on the line and send that survey up to D E C to have a determination right away. In this case, I don't think it's anywhere near their line.
I, I, I understand, Ms. Evans, you're, you know, a well-respected professional and I, I know that from having worked with you on, in in the past. Is there anywhere in the documentation that refers to the C-Haw line and your professional opinion that, that this, this project will not disturb, is certainly not within the C-Haw and will not be disturbing any area contained therein?
I did prepare a memo to that effect and attach the C-Haw, uh, map to that memo. I believe that was part of the application.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't have it right here. Could somebody read me those couple of sentences and just refresh my recollection?
Beth, I have it in front of me if you, if you need it.
Good, because I don't have it in front of me, Andrew.
Chair and Ms. Goldstein, is okay if I read, if I may, verbatim from the May fourteenth letter?
Yeah, not the whole thing, just the part about the C-Haw.
It's a short letter.
Okay, let me, um, okay. This is, it reminds me back when I did the four questions as a kid. Okay, uh, let me get this right. Pursu-, okay. Pursuant to your recent request in response to a comment made at the recent planning board meeting, I reviewed our files with respect to the location of the coastal erosion hazard area, C E H A, boundary on the oriented beach club property. As illustrated on the attached map, the C-Haw boundary on this property is near the existing seawall and not near the proposed work on the existing patio. Therefore, based on the proposed limits of disturbance and review of the C-Haw boundary, it is my professional opinion that no review or approval is necessary from N Y S D C relative to C-Haw regulations.
And so there is no disturbance. I, I know that it, it looks on, on this map as if the patio is not within the C-Haw. And no disturbance during construction will be occurring beyond, up, up to that point?
That was my opinion, correct, based on the construction plans that have been submitted.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize for not having that memo, Andy. I, I just think it's, again, it's better practice to, to go to D E C and get that information. And so that's what I normally would have been looking for. I, it seems that there's no environmental consultant for H C Z M C anymore. Usually we get, you know, they're, they're the folks that are urging, you know, reaching out to D E C or that kind of thing.
Have you had a consultant by, retained by the village, uh, Ms. Goldstein?
Yeah, we used to have.
Because we, because we, I know we, uh, part of, I think it was paragraph forty-four, uh, provision forty-four, we actually had to bring it. That's, I mean, Beth, it's great to meet you. Great to see you. That's actually why Ms. Evans was involved because to satisfy one of those elements, we had to bring in our own environmental.
Right. At the, at the current moment, there is, um, I believe, uh, H C Z M is, is they, Sven did not, did not review this per se, but, uh, their consultants did. So.
Okay.
I, I'm glad, A, A, Karaf, it's also, Mr. Gates pointed out that their team also reviewed this and agreed with. And again, I'm not putting words in Mr. Gates' mouth because I think he is still online with us. Okay, there. Agreed with the finding by Ms. Evans.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Evans. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it. I, I prefer to see it be done another way and I think in future applications, we keep an eye out for that.
This leave, this leaves us now with the format of the SWIP. And the question on the table was, are the members of the planning board comfortable with the technical aspects of it and Esteban's finding? Since he's our consulting engineer and has more experience in, uh, reviewing these and weighing in on these than any of us do. We rely on him as the engineer, uh, to help us on this. So we had an issue on the table to put a condition into the resolution that a document as described in the section of the Village Code that I mentioned before, I don't have it on my screen anymore, um, would, um, would be submitted to the, to the, um, village prior to anything, any building permits or anything being issued. Uh, so we tabled that and now anybody have any objection to that or any comments about that, anything they want to say? No? Yes? Is that, is that?
Andrew, I could cer-, I could certainly repackage the, the document into one document and submit it. And I'll follow the guidelines under the, uh, chapter, was it two eighty, uh, two eighty-four?
You can reach out to Mr. Garcia to make sure it's in compliance with best practice.
Yeah.
That would be my request, Chair, and members of the planning board. I, I really do. I, this team has worked diligent and thorough. Thank God, it's not a tremendously large project, but it's an important project, one that's indicative and reflective of the concerns raised by H C Z M, by a planning board, um, and also the community as a whole. So I, I would certainly ask that we move forward, but we certainly would caveat that we would provide this in, in the future purposes, Ms. Goldstein. Obviously, as long as I'm, you know, um, going forward with applications, that's something to make sure we, we asterisk, uh, going forward for good business practice.
All right. So it seems like, um, we have a way forward, but before we, we are, we have to open the wetlands permit hearing. We had a site plan, uh, hearing open. We need to open a wetlands permit hearing and then see if there's any, uh, member of the public that needs, wants to comment on anything they've heard tonight or anything they've read or either wetlands or a site plan. So I need a motion to open the wetlands permit hearing.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Where are you? I lost you. Oh, there you are. Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so the public hearing is open. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment on this application, either the site plan or the wetlands permit, um, if you please raise your hand so that, uh, we can hear your comments.
I'll be taking people in order as they appear. Stuart Teaker. You are promoted to panelist. You can unmute yourselves, state your name for the record and speak.
Sorry, I had to rejoin. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments and, uh, about the S P plan as well as some of the comments that were made in the prior discussion. The stamp by Kellard Sessions, uh, as approved, I've seen on other plans in the village. So I don't think it's something that's being done by, I'm not sure who it's being done by or what the purpose of it is. Um, but I don't think it's really a good practice, um, especially prior to planning board. Um, I just want to point out to Mr. Spats because it may be an issue is that if he looks at the H C Z M C consistency resolution, a reference, a SWIP done in two thousand seventeen, which, as far as I can tell, is just a mislabeling or misrepresentation. So that may be a concern. Um, I don't think this complies with chapter two ninety-four because chapter two ninety-four has to comply with the stormwater design manual. Um, I don't see any pre-treatment that's required by the stormwater design manual on infiltration systems. Is it there? Am I still on?
Yes. Does anybody, would anybody want to respond? Does anybody, would anybody want to respond to, is there pre-treatment in the plans? Or? Okay.
Um, I'll assume it's not there. I believe, I believe there's supposed to be an inspection port for the infiltration system because systems are, need to be maintained and are supposed to be usable in perpetuity. So I think that needs to be added. There are, I think it'd be very helpful to the board if the engineer could do a stormwater management plan where all the components of the stormwater management system are shown on one page, if that's possible. I just think it makes it easier to understand. I don't see any elevations on the SP four except for a spot elevation, I guess, in the center and a couple along the edge. So I think that might be helpful. I know there's probably not a lot of grade change, but that area is proposed to be cut quite considerably, right? It, it appears to be ten inches. So the other thing I would say is, in, in the argument for it being contained in one document, is that the only enforcement mechanism on a SWIP is through the contractor certification. And the contractor certification is designed to be part of SWIP. It's designed to be signed by all the contractors who work on the job, take the similar certification that they understand the SWIP. So I think it has to be easily accessible for everybody. The other issue I would raise is that it's one thing to collect the runoff from the new impervious surfaces. But the stormwater design manual requires that the system be voided and ready to accept the next storm within three to eight hours. And I believe that's why most SWIPs include the hydroCAD calculations, which I think is just to computer run the numbers. But I'm not an engineer, but those are my comments. So I hope when this comes back, it will encompass all the requirements of chapter two.
Could I respond to that?
Chair, actually, would, I would love for my team to address the planning board. I'm not going to address Mr. Teekert. We're going to address the planning board and, and members, Chair and members of the planning board. And I believe our record in the past made it very clear in terms of the vast effort that was made with regards to the small increase of impervious surface where none currently exists now. But yes, Nunzio definitely addressed those issues because we also have Richard, who will also talk about how landscaping is going to address those very issues. So gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen, proceed, please.
Okay, if I may, we do have the elevations of, of the, all the drainage structures, the, the area drains, the, the bottom of the cul-de-sacs, the inlet and outlet pipes, all of that is on the drawing on SP four. The detail does show inspection ports for the cul-de-sac units. And we do have a water quality cul-de-sac unit that takes the water in first and goes through there before it gets into the other four storage units. Percolation will allow the, the units to drain, to recreate, to recapture the needed volume. There are emergency overflows in case we have, you know, major storms one after the other and the system is not, is designed for a hundred year storm. It'll go out into pipes at the bottom of the perimeter planting area and into the grass as it was originally going, the way it exists now. Richard will probably get into it, but all the flow from the terrace is going to go out to the planting area and picked up by basically a curtain drain, which is a perforated pipe wrapped in, in, in crushed stone. And that'll provide some pre-treatment also. Goes into the individual area drains and then directed into the water quality basin. If you want me to share the screen, I mean, I could put the plan up, but I think the board has seen that plan before, so.
I leave it up to the Chair and members of the planning board, absolutely, because I certainly respect and.
Does anybody want to see, does any, any member of the planning board like to see the plan at this point in time?
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Does anyone feel that they need to understand anything additional with regards to the issues that were raised by Mr. Teekert? Okay, thank you. I think Amber indicated there were others who wanted to speak as well.
I do not see anyone raising their hand indicating that they wish to speak.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Amber, if you could remove, yes, thank you. Okay, so now it's, it's the board's decision. Close the public hearings at this point in time and move forward to discuss the resolution. I think Amber time to speak. Okay, so I need a motion to close the wetlands permit public hearing and the site plan public hearing. We'll do it all in one motion.
Second.
Okay, okay, Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so we're to the point now where we can decide to move forward. Teresa, you have something to add?
If you'd like, I formulated the condition that you guys discussed previously. If you'd like me to read it for you.
Is the board interested in hearing this? As a, as a alternative? It's like, nobody's saying no, so go for it.
Okay, all right. The form of the SWIP documentation shall be resubmitted in accordance with section two ninety-four of the, of the village code and submitted to the village engineer, Kellard Sessions, and approved by the village engineer prior to issuance of the building permit.
I, I would expand that a little bit. It's not just the village code. It's New York State Code Stormwater Design Manual. I think that's where the real guidance is stated on what, what it has to contain.
The, the, the village code does refer to that, Cindy. So it does refer to that already. So by referring to the village code, that, that should take care of it.
Okay.
Teresa, that was prior to the issuance of a building permit. I just want to make sure I heard you.
Yes, that's correct.
Nunzio. Nunzio, I can't see you, but I know you're on still. You'll work with Mr. Garcia and make sure that this all comes together and we're able to.
Sure.
Good, fine. Teresa and Chair, members of the planning board, we're, we're great with that addition.
Okay. Observation I went to make is during the public hearing, you had no comments on wetlands impacts. And that's, I just wanted to point that out for the record. It's important the way the freshwater, the way chapter one ninety-two is written, that, that be noted for the record.
Okay, thank you. Keeping us honest. Okay, I'll make note of that for the next time I do a wetlands permit hearing. Okay, so here we are. Do I have a motion then to approve the resolution as amended? I'm sorry, did somebody move it?
I did, so moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes, but I, we need to have a conversation after this vote as a planning board. If we can, you know, once we're done with this agenda, I, I'd like to have a little conversation because I'm doing this against my better judgment, but yes.
You can vote no if you want.
No, I, I don't. I, I, I don't want it to stop. I just want us to have the tools that we need and, and that are required by law.
I mean, so, so this is, you know, we, we've been discussing sort of intake and process and whatnot. So before an application comes to us, it should be complete and it should follow the code. But we'll, we're, we're having this conversation as we.
That's a different motion.
Right. Okay.
So yes.
I vote yes. So the motion is approved.
Thank you. And we will work diligently to get that back, working with Garcia back to, and we're going to submit that to Teresa, who would?
Submit it to Amber.
Amber, okay, Amber, got it. We know where to find her.
And Amber will, Amber will send it out to anybody that needs it and whatnot, I guess.
Great.
Amber is your gatekeeper.
Yes, she indeed. We know where to find her. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate the time. And listen, we need you guys to hurry up and finish because it's fifty-seven forty-four NICS. We'll get out there in route, so. Hopefully you have an early night. Good night, everyone.
All right, good night.
Thank you so much.
Everyone who is not a member of the planning board or, yeah. Okay, we're back to just us. Okay, all right. Oh, wait, we still have Richard here. Okay. Cindy, did you want to have the discussion? And Nunzio are both here. We're finished, so you guys can leave the meeting. Thank you.
We're kicking people out for change. I'm sorry, I.
That's okay.
Sorry, but yeah, I, I've seen these applications and in my mind, they're getting worse and worse and worse. I mean, I didn't even bring up the fact that one of them should have had a box checked that it's adjacent to a critical environmental area, Long Island Sound. I think it's a problem that HCZMC doesn't have their own environmental consultant. We, I, I think, you know, trust but verify. We, we need independent information. Sometimes on specialties, I know we have planning consultants. But I, I just, the applications, it's just not working. I, I, I'm truly frustrated. I can't imagine how the staff feels because they're looking at stuff that's all over the place and it's, we're, we're, they just keep, you know, sending memos and memos. And Susan Oakley has to revise three sets of memos and is anybody else feeling this frustration or am I just?
I, I mean, I agree.
Absolutely.
I mean, we haven't, I haven't been sharing some of the conversations we've been having internally with the, with the members of the planning board. But Amber did a presentation to the board trustees during the budget process. And we, we had, I had spoken to one of the trustees who called me about something else. And he then asked that we come back and, and further expound on what we feel needs to change with regards to some of the processes. And so Amber and Ashley, who's not with us tonight, have been working very hard on putting together a list of issues and will work with Frank, who's not with us. I think Frank got off the call. Because it is very difficult. We're getting applications, I mean, we're getting applications that are inaccurate. They don't reflect things. They're not filled out properly. Part of it is the forms are terrible. They've not been looked at in probably in thirty years. The whole, the whole process from, from the minute that the application is received in the building department to when it comes into planning and goes off to a land use board, we're looking at the whole, the whole process. Or they're looking at it. I mean, I've been involved tangentially, but the goal is to do some sort of presentation to the, to the board trustees on sort of what, what some issues are and some possible funding needs with regards to, I mean, you know, Amber can't open a PDF. It takes like twenty minutes for it to open a PDF. Her computer is so slow, it's ridiculous. It's, it's just ridiculous. So there's a whole host of issues that need to be addressed.
And I, and I think we're on a slippery slope because if we start, you know, oh, it's just a small project. Oh, it's, it's really okay. Somebody said it's okay. It's not cutting it for me anymore and I don't want to argue with applicants about these things. I want to follow the code. I want it to be as easy as possible for our professionals to assist us in this process and I want to move applications through in a timely way, but they've all got to be treated fairly.
Right.
Equally evenly. I, I, I just feel like we're, it's just scattershot at this point and, and.
Tonight, we had, we had a lot of different little things that came up, you know, this, but, okay, we addressed it. You know, we, we don't want to hold up applicants unduly if, you know, if everything, if they did everything they were asked to do. You know, but we're just going to have to, you know, hopefully address the, some of the internal processes and, and work better. I, I mean, I've, you should see some of the things we got before you guys even see them. Amber is, I mean, Amber is working, you know, of, of many hours. I don't want to use the.
Well, so that, that's a policy question. So at what point is something in such bad shape that Amber says, you know what, I, I can't even come up with a list of what you need to do. You're going to take up hours of my time, go read the code, go read the manual, go read the LWRP.
I mean, that's what, Hyden Street, Hyden Street came to us as a site plan.
A lawsuit.
Well, it came to us, it came to us, you know, through, but, but it came to us as a site plan review and they, they didn't have a single thing that they needed for the list of things that are needed for a site plan review. So I basically sent them a letter and said, here's a section of the code, go read it.
Yeah, because what we did for them was over and above and I, I'm happy to help, but.
Special circumstance because they went through an appeals process and, you know.
But we can't, we can't treat Amber this way and we can't treat Esteban.
I absolutely agree with you. Totally agree with you. And like I said, I think I've been working on it for the past two weeks.
So how do we help? I mean, I, I'll do whatever I can do, but.
I don't think there's really anything that you can do right now. I mean, Ashley put together a, a, what I thought was a pretty good power presentation because, you know, the board of trustees is going to get at the granular, granular level. They're going to be flying at, you know, five thousand feet. So it was a good five thousand feet. We have to also probably talk to Jerry, the village manager and, you know, you know, talk a little bit, getting more down into the detail. But it's in the process. I mean, you know, you know, I won't even be, I, I won't even tell you, an application sort of came across, you know, our, our, this is what started this whole thing, you know, is somebody I knew well. So I could call them up and ask them what they were doing because it wasn't clear what they were doing from the application. And I got a lot of complaints.
Yeah, we want to avoid that.
And unfortunately, the complaints were, were, were directed to the wrong person. You know, and, and so, you know, got me thinking about what's, what's happening and Amber and I spent a good amount of time on the next business day talking about what the process was and how thing, how paper flowed and stuff like that. And so we, we began to, not that she hadn't been looking at it already, and fixing things as she saw them and things she can fix. And sometimes doing the work above and beyond. So yay, Amber. We don't want to run out. But anyway.
Yeah, and in terms of the SWIP, I mean, can we tell Mr. Garcia that it's really not a SWIP, he should reject it? I mean, was it really difficult for you to review that last SWIP?
Yeah.
You know, was it, was it, because it wasn't in the right format?
In terms of, I guess, in relation to twenty-five, it was, you know, things were kind of over, all, all over the place. So it did take me, like Ms. Goldstein alluded to, it did take me a while to, you know, go through the information because a lot of stuff, what I'm used to seeing, obviously, wasn't in the right location from what I'm used to seeing. So obviously I had to dig a little deeper to find the, the information to make sure that it was meeting village codes. Took some time, but I was able to get through it, no problem. And then obviously working with the applicant to get the approvals that he needed stormwater wise. You know, that, you know, it ended up happening and then getting approved. But obviously, if they presented the information a little bit more cohesively, it would have led to a faster process for that.
The line is, is that, you know, Esteban's time for these reviews. The line is, is that, you know, Esteban's time for these reviews is paid out of the escrow that the applicant pays. So the applicant ended up spending more money, having Esteban spend more time to, to review what they sent in.
But the question really is, at what point do we want our consultants to kick it back and say, hey, this isn't in the right format?
It doesn't need power and the application isn't completed, shouldn't go anywhere. It should be right away. It shouldn't even come to the planning department.
I see. So if, if we, if we, if you drafted a memo, not today, not tomorrow, that all of us, you know, agreed in a public meeting would be sent to, basically giving direction on what we want to see to the planning department, the building department, whomsoever. Would, would that put some teeth in it? Because I then don't want a staff person to get yelled at because they made an arbitrary decision. Then they could say, well, the planning board has directed me to kick back whatever I, you know, is incomplete and you're missing information.
Well, I, I think that we were walking down a road, going down a road that was happening rather quickly, where we were going to be bringing the attention to the village manager at the very least, and members of the Board of Trustees, who could help make these changes. There's some code changes that could be made that make life easier for everyone. But there's also two departments involved. And administratively, those two departments report to the village manager. I mean, obviously, the village manager doesn't oversee the, the building inspector's decision-making process. But administratively and budget standpoint and giving out resources to departments in one end is certainly the village manager's responsibility. And so that's the path we were going down to point out some issues and, and, and the solutions to those issues, not just say, here we got problems. Basically saying, this is what, what we would like to see happen. You know, this is what needs our opinion, so.
Or we get the other boards on, on, on board, you know, that I assume they have the same problem.
We share with the planning board and certainly, you know, you know, have the planning board add their voices to it so that we can say that, you know, we're in, the planning board is in agreement. This is what we all think needs to have happened.
I think on the issue of completion, that if the planning board came up with a description of what they wanted a complete application to look like, that, that could then be put out there, made part of the application form. And then there'd be more predictability among that applicants as to what's being prepared and submitted. Because sometimes I think it is difficult for people when they look at the code to figure out what it is that they're supposed to be preparing.
There was always a checklist. Betty Ann kept a checklist for each land use board of what had, you know, just the basics. She would, she wasn't going to go through and see that the applications of the CAF or the EAF were all filled out exactly properly. She would make sure that they were there. And I would think that checklist exists on somebody's hard drive somewhere. And that could be given to an applicant, say, here's, here's the fifteen things you need to do.
Yeah, I think, I think the problem that you're having with it is not that it doesn't have the fifteen things. It's that the fifteen things don't, don't say enough in order for you to determine whether they meet the requirements of the code. So it's a little bit deeper of a problem than just check the box. So, but, you know, we can, as part of the recommendations, they're making it to the village manager. They certainly look at that. The other thing some municipalities do, and which I appear or represent, is they have a committee being, which is a Mormon, and I know you do an intake meeting on the applications. But it's a much more formal process where each of the parties who are reviewing the application goes through and determines if it's complete or not. And that, that may be a way to help move people through the process more quickly and to flag questions that come up. And then that people get kind of stuck in place on, like, where do I go next? Or how do I go next? Or what comes first? That kind of thing.
Okay, I feel much better now. It's off my chest, so.
Finish packing. Can we finish this meeting? I'm leaving, I'm leaving in the morning. Is everybody done? We're all good? All right, everyone.
Enough for today.
I hope you have a good holiday weekend. And I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.